All right. Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call to order the Thursday, March 3rd, 2022 meeting, the Town Council, the town of Bowling Green. We have a quorum, and I'd like everybody to please stand and follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, everybody. All right. First thing on the agenda tonight is public hearing for rezoning number RZS 2021-025 Northview. We're planning, the Planning Commission held a public meeting and moved to project the project to the Town Council with no recommendation. Town Council is now holding a public hearing for this. So I would like to open up the public hearing. When you come up, please state your name and your address. So is there anybody here to speak on the rezoning of Northview?
Would you like to have staff introduce it?
Uh, we could do that, yes. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a project that is located on AP Hill Boulevard. It's a rezoning from B1 Business to R3 Residential. It does have conditions. They're on your table. They've just been distributed. The proposed density is 3.1 dwelling units per acre, and the site size is 42.18 acres. Thirty-four point fifty-four plus or minus are being rezoned to R3.
All right. Do we have anybody here to speak on behalf of Northview?
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Keith Oster. I'm a principal at Solomon Donahoe and Ingalls, SDI, the civil engineer for the firm. I'm at 10720 Columbia Drive in Fredericksburg. I'm here representing Northview. And Mr. Mike Mans, the owner and applicant is here to answer any questions along with me, obviously, trying to answer questions. I just wanted to bring up a handful of points associated with the development. We're, the project is attempting to bring an appropriate blend, generous, six-acre commercial area along with the residential. The intent is to have a higher-density residential separating the commercial from the single-family residential, which is a little further in the back. The single-family and the, the, the single-family attached, the attach and detach are both intended to have a community focus and village-style feel. The project is going to have public water, public sanitary sewer extended throughout. Our understanding and speaking with the Public Works Director is there was sufficient water to support the project. Although, you'll note in the conditions, we, we are also identifying a, a condition in order to assist in the, in, in the, in the location and development of future well sites. There is a nearby public sanitary sewer system, station, excuse me, a pump station. And our understanding is that pump station is underutilized and would benefit from having some additional sanitary sewer flow going to it. The project would have public roads within, obviously meeting minimum standards for, for VDOT public roads. The, the, the homes aren't intended to be uniform in nature. They are, they are, the, the vision is to, that they have a tied-together village feel, have porches, be Ford, Ford-focused. The, the intent is to have rear-low garages with the alleyways and the driveways serving the rear of the development so that they can have that, that Ford feel with a pedestrian-friendly atmosphere. There are sidewalks identified throughout. There's quite a bit of common area throughout the development, in the center of development, as well as off to the, off to the side, near the townhomes as, as identified in the GDP. The, there's a discussion point relative to the R3. We do have a couple of different ways to handle it. We, what was presented in GDP is our preferred, what we call a preferred R3 plan. Hopefully, or I believe, I, we had prepared, I'll say, an offering relative to an adjustment to the R3 ordinance. Should it be the pleasure of the council to, to take that up as a possible adjustment to the zoning ordinance. We, we can both adhere to the existing R3, uh, R3 ordinance, or our preference is to have an adjustment to the R3 ordinance to recognize this, this more closely-knit village-style development that would allow the more generous open spaces in the rears and the more generous common areas, while not really losing a whole lot with the, with the, the separation inside. The development, as it's shown on the GDP, has over 25% open space outside of the individual lots, outside of the rideaway. It's, as I said, quite generous. Stormwater management would be handled in accordance with the current regulation. We would be using an existing crossover that also already has turn lanes associated with it. We have points of entry, one of which we would designate as being emergency-only. Our, our intent is to encourage traffic to utilize 301 rather than Lakewood Road to get into town. That was a point of concern. A point of concern noted from before. We are leaving a very intentional access point to the adjacent land to suit future development of that land, should it occur. If it doesn't, then it'll, it'll be there anyway. There are numerous finer points that, relative to the, the, the conditions, the proffers that we've offered to demonstrate our commitment to a certain number of units so that we don't overextend the number of units. It's also committing to that transition zone between the commercial and the single-family detached with the attached units. We do intend to provide a, a playground or, or the community amenities in the amenity areas. And the owner, of course, remains intent on marketing commercial land to a highly appropriate user. I'm absolutely more than happy to answer any questions that anybody might have. The traffic was included in our GDP on the cover page. For, for the sake of traffic, it's interesting because that's a question that's often asked. And the, I, I guess, the, the, one key answer is the traffic is a lot less than it would be under a commercial zone. But it's considerably less. I don't have a direct comparison, but suffice it to say, it's considerably less than i- if it was developed as a 40 or 42-acre commercial piece of land.
Have you done a traffic study?
No, we have done a traffic warrants for turn lanes. This...
A traffic impact study?
There has not been a TIA performed by a, a traffic engineer, no.
Okay, thank you.
The last page of the GDP demonstrates a warrant analysis that we had done with the, with the peak trips anticipated in the peak hour as well as daily trips. There are no elevations that have been developed in a situation like this. There hasn't been a builder or a particular product that's been chosen. So the, the, the owner is a, a local individual that has a great deal of interest in having this be a quality development. It's not, it's, it's difficult to, to offer a building elevation, given that that's a highly specialized thing. That is, that is unique to each individual builder. He simply doesn't know who's going to build the houses yet. So it's very difficult to offer an elevation.
Is Mr. Mann planning to develop this, or is he going to have someone else develop it?
Um, I, I believe, I'll let Mr. Mann speak for himself.
We're not builders, and we're not developers. We have some builders in mind who have, I think you would consider it a good track record.
Can you share with us who those are, or?
Well, we, we've talked to Mike Jones with their company.
Mike Jones?
Yes, and more discussions with him. We haven't delved into trying to figure out what we're going to build or what we're going to allow to be built until we feel like we have something to sell to them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel, please remember that if it's not proffered, even if it's in, included in their application, they do not have to do anything that is not actually a proffer.
Right, and that was my other question, sir. You mentioned something about a condition. Are there proffers that maybe I haven't seen yet?
We had provided a set of proffers mid-week. I think it was Wednesday, I think Mr. Mann swung by and signed them yesterday. It's two pages this morning.
Oh, I didn't see it. Sorry. Okay, thank you.
Now, you, you did say something when you first started out, something about possible providing a well site. I looked in here. I was trying to find it, and maybe I just overlooked it.
We don't have a well site specifically identified on this property. Mr. Mann's has, has, we, we've talked about, with the adjacent property, there, there is, are possibilities of well sites on his property adjacent to this. There's, there's quite a few different possibilities on how Mr. Mann's going to help.
I'm, I'm sorry, because I thought I said you heard me say something about on the property sheet.
No, there is a, we had proffered. It was, uh, it was a cash proffer applicant all the way at the end. It was 50,000.
Towards, towards utilities or well or whatever?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, all right. That's what you said. Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor, this is a public hearing. I know that the gentleman was kind enough to field questions, but I didn't know if he wanted to move along with the public hearing.
Yeah, we, we could do that. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you. I'm here for it.
Anybody else want to come up here and voice your opinion on this public hearing? Please do. State your name and address.
Good evening, sir. I'm Alfred Scott. I'm the deputy commander for Fort AP Hill.
Okay, sir.
And I appreciate the opportunity to be here with everyone tonight. It's really wonderful. I just started eight months ago, and it's just a great opportunity to be here. So thank you very much. I'd like to provide our initial assessment of the proposal. If it's approved, then how the project could have some potential negative impacts on the installation that we, where we do training in readiness for our military forces. I'd like to highlight just four of those, please, this evening. First, since the proposed area abuts the installation, the development is very close to military aviation routes, ranges in some of the training areas that we have. Future residents may hear light or heavy machine gun or other weapon systems that are fired, both night and day. We have more than 400 rotary-wing aircraft events throughout the year, and those fly very close or perhaps over some of those proposed areas, excuse me. Those flights occur intermittently throughout the day and the night. We can assume, of course, that any new occupants there may or may not be familiar with those type of sounds and may not be comfortable with them. If the project is approved, we'd request, including the requirement for real estate disclosures within the project's proffers, to inform the future residents of their proximity to the installation and effects of such noises, vibrations of smoke that may be a result of the training that we do on the installation. A second concern that we have, of course, is that we've talked earlier, is the traffic. The proposed project is located just south of Fort AP Hill's main gate on US Route 301 and immediately adjacent to our Gate 4 on Lakewood Road, which is actually a narrow secondary road. The gate is used at times for a myriad of reasons to include emergency vehicles to come in and out and installation egress. If the proposal is approved, we request that the town execute a traffic study that we talked about earlier to fully explore the impacts of the proposed development on the installation and infrastructure and determine if any necessary road improvements need to be made. Lakewood Road that I mentioned before is adjacent to the utilities and communication lines, both above and below ground that are critical to the installation. Should the project go forward, we would request deliberate and close coordination with us on the activity in the vicinity of the road to include digging and clearing to prevent any impacts that we have to the installation's power and communications. And lastly, the potential of light pollution related to the development could also negatively impact some of our nighttime operations and training on AP Hill. The joint land use study completed in partnership with the town and other local communities in 2014 contained multiple detailed recommendations, including a recommendation for ordinances related to the prevention of light pollution. As such, if the proposal is approved, we would request that all site lighting for the project be dark skies friendly, which is a full cutoff that directs light downward, preventing light pollution. That's all that we have, and then comments that we'd like to make. And I'd like, again, thank you very much for the opportunity to talk to you tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Can we get your contact information? Can we get your card?
Yep.
Could you give your card to the clerk?
Absolutely, ma'am. Absolutely.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak on behalf?
Stand a little bit so I could speak better. Bonnie Cannon, South Main Street. I've stood here before, before counsel about the other proposed development on 301, and I have the same strongly opposed opinion to address you, counsel. And I do not need to repeat anything. If you look in your packet, the Planning Commission comments, pages eight, nine, and 10, I think it's fully explicit. I don't need to stand here and tell you anything else. And please consider this. I have family at Green Lawn Cemetery. I spend a lot of time over there. And I'd like for that to continue to be my quiet time when I go over there at times, because I would hate to see all that traffic. There's lots of traffic, lots of funerals go over there. Traffic affects those kinds of things. And I enjoy my quiet time at Green Lawn, and I would not want to see the beautiful drive coming into Bowling Green disturbed there with that lovely field that's there that I get to drive by every time I come into the town of Bowling Green. And another thing I'd just like to mention to you, this, things that you do. Bowling Green is a historical town. We need to retain the historical...
We are here to discuss Northview, please.
I'm just saying I'm relating it though to the beauty there, Mark, of the field.
Okay.
The historical feeling when I come into the town of Bowling Green. I have that feeling. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to speak on Northview? Second last call. Seeing nobody coming up?
So the council has a decision whether to keep the public hearing open for additional public hearing next month without having to re-advertise, or the council can close the public hearing tonight.
But we can also move it till next month to, to consider it also.
Yes, to allow, to allow for public input. It, it seems like there are quite a few details that they need to be ironed out, and so council may wish to consider to keep the public hearing open for one more month to allow the public to comment, given the size of the proposal.
Okay, would that, do I hear a motion to keep the public hearing open till our next meeting convenes in April? I got a first by Ms. Jean Davis, second?
Second.
Second by Arthur. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Hearing none. I. Carrie's public hearing is kept open till April. Moving on. Uh, well, I'm sorry, not moving on. What is council's? Never mind. I'm lost.
If, if you're going to keep the public hearing open until next time?
Yeah, we'll just do it next time.
Is there a motion also to continue consideration of this matter until the April meeting?
I guess, I would have figured that would have carried. That's where I was headed to, but I figured that would have carried over with going open.
So you got a motion?
All right, I got a motion that we carry over our discussion and, uh, motion until April. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Gaines. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nays. None. Motion carries. All right, now let me go. Find my agenda. We have no, we have no delegations, but now we're on public comments. I'd like to open up public comments. Anybody who wishes to speak to counsel, have any concerns, make any comments, please come on up. State your name and your address. Second final call. Seeing nobody. Close public comment. Moving on to member comments. Do I have any council members that would like to, has anything to say, anything they've done since last month? Hearing none, seeing none. Closing. Member comments. Moving on to staff reports. Do I have any questions for Public Works?
Um, if they want to throw it away, they can, or we can come pick them up. They were there to let the contractor know where the water meter was actually at, so they could find it. So, but yeah, they could throw it away if they want.
Anybody else? Jeff?
Yeah, I got a quick one. I guess this would be the, the spot to do it. Do we have any update on that, that silly little, little ramp access there on Main Street that we keep putting the cone at? The cone keeps disappearing, but the thing hasn't been fixed yet. I know it's VDOT.
Oh, you're talking about the handicap ramp there, that plant? Yeah.
They did repair it, but I went out there and looked at it, and I'm sure Mr. Irby did as well. And it does look like there is a little, the, the corner has pulled up again. So it's, what I think is we should just go ahead and, and repair it ourselves. But...
Have you contacted VDOT again?
No, okay. Yeah, VDOT was contacted, but we will contact them again and repair it ourselves if, okay, council would like that to happen.
You might have to do that. VDOT is so busy right now with cleanup everywhere else.
Okay.
Anybody else? If not, moving on to the police department. Anybody have any questions for the chief? All right, here. No, speak up. Go ahead. Hang on one second. We have some technical difficulties here.
On the website for We the People, there was a comment about a, I guess, a person that was in somebody's yard on Main Street and that you guys were called, and then there was somebody next door. The garage was tampered with two days in a row, the garage door and stuff. Did you have an update on that, or did you see anything, or?
There's, we, we haven't found anything. So, we did get the call, went out, and everything was found to be accurate. Nobody has been tampered with anything unless it's something different that I'm not aware of. But I know we did go out for one this week, and everything checked out.
Okay. Thank you. You had a busy month.
Anybody else before we move on to Town Clerk and Treasurer's report? All right, Town Clerk and Treasurer, anybody have any questions on that?
We can have it checked, and we will get back to you.
Do these units in here, they run on propane, correct? Yeah, they're big burners. All right, anybody else to Town Clerk's report? All right, moving on to Town Manager's report. Do you have anything to add, Allison? Or does anybody have any questions for Allison?
On Monday, we have a new treasurer and a new clerk report, reporting to work, and I will be bringing them to Town Council for introduction.
I have a question. First, the DEQ for the Fairmont project, is that on track, or are we going to have a meeting? I know you had said you had talked to them, but...
As well as working on some of the proffers. I had a Zoom meeting with Mr. Webb and have talked with him about some additional things. And so we're, we're getting there, but we just weren't ready yet.
Do we have the numbers from DEQ?
DEQ is, has said that they believe that they are going to be able to be here at the next meeting on the 7th of April. And so we'll...
The second question I had is about the trash. Did we get that resolved with the recycling and the same truck and all that, or what's going on?
It, it sounds like it has been resolved. I haven't received it. It's been reported to me that they are... But it's on my list. Shiftlets did sell their, the company to, to County Waste, and so now we have some additional people to work with on the issue. But it looks like it has been resolved, yes. Yeah. Okay, thank you for the feedback, and I'll make sure that we follow up. Thank you.
I'm, I'll make an appointment, make the call. We'll try to get it straightened out. Uh, anybody else for the Town Manager? All right, moving on to the consent agendas. We only have one...
Here, but me looking at it, I look at cameras and I think, you know, uh, commercial camera system probably no more than twenty-five hundred and that's on the high end. I mean, I.
That would be.
One for a thousand. And then locks doors, I know they can be expensive when you're looking at commercial, you know, if you're replacing the whole door. I I could see that two to five thousand and then glass, I mean, there's multiple options depending on what you're trying to do. That's just me, I mean.
The glass is the big one.
Uh, when this.
I mean, or what's the goal, I guess, with the glass, that's where.
Well, when this started out. When this started out originally, uh, because we had a a problem in town, this guy coming around. So that's when we jumped on the bandwagon of trying to get these, this office secured because we're not. Uh, and we jumped on it, we got an estimate on it and that was as far as we did with it. Okay, uh, we had another incident the other week where a lady, a person came in. And they got our rate with the girls and one of the employees had the phone up their ears fixing to call the chief. That's how bad it got and scary to them. So we're at the point, we need to get it done. We already discussed it a while back and agreed that we were gonna do it. So that's why we're trying to go ahead and get the money appropriated now so we can get that part done. Because, you know, we're worried about their safety.
I guess, uh, if we're gonna extend the counter out, would the glass be there on the counter or are we actually replacing the structural? Glass in the building, because I I.
It's just, it's it's just on the ca- the front counter where they have face-to-face meet, where they would just pass the bill through the bottom of the glass, yeah.
I I was taking it as we're replacing the glass on the outside.
No, it's just, it's just, the, just the front counter only, pass-through window.
That makes sense.
Okay.
They kind of turned the front counter into like a, a bank teller thing. Wall-to-wall.
So, do I hear a motion on this?
Uh, one interjection, sorry, um, if we do this, uh, a proposal, I'd like to add on there, the security gate over at the water and sewer treatment. I think that's a high priority that that needs to be secure. And I've been talking about that for months.
Longer than that.
That's just a.
Now Josh had a proposal on that, didn't he?
For somebody to go in there and do something because we don't have any kind of gate to know who comes in and goes out and it's open all the time.
Didn't you have a proposal on that, Josh, or some number or something on that, because I know we looked into it? Or I thought you did.
We did, um, it was gonna be around twenty thousand at that time, um, and then however, the uh, lady we were working with unfortunately got into a car accident.
Oh.
Um, and was out for a while, so kind of just stopped there.
I'd like to see that put on here and use some of the arcathons for that for security.
Yeah, because it's, it's left open a lot. You know, you go to the other ones, you have to have a badge either to get in or you punch a code to get in. And then when you go in, the gate closes behind you. You come back out, it automatically opens, you go and it closes back up behind you.
Did we have any kind of dollar amount on that?
What'd you say that was about twenty thousand, you said, Josh? With inflation now, it's probably gone up quite a bit.
Yeah, at that time it was around twenty thousand, but again, it's probably gone up quite a bit by now.
Yeah. Metal's gone up quite a bit.
I mean, could we maybe just like put it off a month and get those numbers and do that part next month when we have the right number?
Can you give us something in a month?
I can try.
We'll get Allison to put on the agenda for next month, you give us some numbers and, uh, we'll talk about it next month.
Sure.
I mean, is it just a gate we're talking about here?
Yes, it's a gate.
In in front of the sewer plant?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a cured, uh, gate.
Sure, I mean, I would think there are a lot of people that, yeah, but I think there are, there's more than one company that does that, I'm sure.
Well, it's an electrical gate and a lot of the companies will install the gate and put the operator down. However, running the electric to it, a a lot of places have stopped doing that, so that's kind of the hard part of finding one company that'll do all those things.
Josh, I I have some literature for your playground equipment too, I got some on.
So I'll bring the specifics, the proposals, and I'll do a little drawing of the front area to show everyone, to show council. Exactly what we're proposing.
Well, you mean, yeah, what we're gonna do. A proposal. Uh, do I, do Allison, uh, Andrea, you wanna present that motion? Where to know for this? I thought you said you want to do this. Never mind, alright, uh.
Yeah, I just want, one other question, just so I get it clear in my head, so the hundred and fifty thousand not to exceed is for, to bring us to ADA compliance with equipment, whatever that would be. And a surface, is it, we don't know what the surface is, rubber, mulch, wood, fiber, stone, sand, turf? We don't have any thought on what that is and is it just the entire playground or just a portion of it?
It is the entire playground.
To be resurfaced.
But does it matter to council, do you want proposals for each type of surfacing? So that you can choose, or do you want staff to choose and give you a proposal for the type that we feel is the right type?
I I just, I'm just trying to figure out a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, what are we gonna get for that? I mean, is it a brand-new playground, is it, um, you know, uh, equipment inclusive for children, sensory, emotional, physical? Development, uh, playground, is it something that is just a swing set? Uh, tha- that's all I'm trying to figure out. A hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars for a brand-new playground, I doubt. Or just the two pieces for ADA compliance or tha- that's what I just don't know, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, I'll bring more information back and in the meantime, I will get some surfacing on there so the children can can play because spring is coming, so in the next couple of weeks, I'll make sure that at least we have some mulch laid down or the so the children aren't falling onto a hard surface when, because there's nothing there, so I mean, it's just, it's all been swept away, so.
Yeah, well, can we, can we?
I'll do that with the fifty thousand dollars, um, that you've already approved in the budget and then I will bring back more information so that you have as much information as possible to make your decision.
Is it, um, we we, the ADA compliance, it's like, we need to be ADA compliant for people to get onto the playground and then we, uh, don't exactly have any ADA-friendly play structures.
No, I think you do have, it it does include a couple, uh, ADA structures, correct?
There has to be access, there has to be access to the pieces of equipment, you have to have a certain amount of piece, you have to certain ha- certain amount of equipment, um, depending on how many pieces are out there, so it's for every, I believe it's for every three, something like that. You need an, an ADA-compliant piece. And so it is to get them to those specific pieces. They have to have access to everything that a, that every other person has access to.
So Allison, can we go ahead and and maybe just change this amount enough to do the surface in that, um, recycled rubber stuff that you can roll on and all that? I don't know what it's called.
I think we'll have to have.
Putting the mulch down and having it wasted and have to take that up.
We'll have to have, uh, you have to have everything in place for this to go down. Because you can't put it down and dig it up and put a, put a playground, I mean, a piece of equipment in.
Oh, okay.
So they gotta take everything out, put the equipment in that's needed, do their borders and stuff and then lay their stuff in there. That's the last thing that goes in.
Okay, thank you.
It sounds like, um, council would like additional information and about the different surfaces and and specifics, so by the time that we are able to get on somebody's schedule, it's going to be a few months anyway, so I think I'll just put some material down, um, for the springtime and it'll give us a little time to to get council the information that they want and to make the, a, a, a good decision.
I think we need the mulch in any case, yeah.
Alright, alright, so.
And the board.
Um, there's a varying prices too, um, depending on what surface you choose, so.
Alright, so, uh, item number one, we're gonna, we're not gonna make a motion on that, we're gonna leave that and, uh, we will revisit that at a later date with more information for council. Uh, item number two, though, I need a motion on that and I need a mount. I must say it mounted twenty thousand, uh, for the s- the safety and security of the girls up front with the cameras. So do I hear a motion?
Kind of feel like we're kind of blind, I, I mean, I'm blindly just trying to figure out what we're doing here, so. I mean, I, I hear, I think these are both things that are important, um, but I want to vote on something when I know what I'm voting on, I don't, right now, feel like I know what that is. It's kind of like, just give us ten thousand dollars to.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not.
I don't think we have the figures in front of us or what that looks like and I think that needs to be done first.
Well, I think, I think safety, no, it needs to be done first.
I want to know when they're gonna open the, the building, I don't understand that either, it really bothers me and concerns me that.
Well, I think we're.
Right now and I don't get, we're, why?
That's why I'm asking, I mean, you can put down any surface, you can put down rubber mulch, but you're helping the mother put down. Put down a wood fiber and a child who is too tiny to learn how to jump, can slip and fall because they can't get their weight position on the wood fiber, but they need some other kind of thing. Those are the things that I'm just thinking about, I mean, if it's already been decided, fine, happy, I just want to make sure the town has no liability and there is no problem. That's the only reason I ask, but that's a safety issue as much as bulletproof glass in one part of those building and someone could stand out right away, that's too easy to do. So, I mean, that's my concern, maybe a group can do it better than that now, but for me, it's all safety and I'm just trying to get the money.
But, well, that's. Well, here again, I mean, to me, to me, uh, on that second thing is, you know, I'm looking out for staff. You know, I'm looking out for their safety and their concern, they're in here every day. You know, if you want to worry about bulletproof glass on the outside of the building, then I can't help you on that. I'm worried about people coming into the building and being able to gain access to the girls.
I'm worried about that too, we're not saying we're not, but I'm worried about the kid in the playground who is gonna sue the town after choking on a piece of rubber because they picked it up and put it in their mouth.
Well, I think we already said, number one, we were gonna go ahead and push that off, unless, if y'all want to vote on all of it, you can make a motion, you know?
A suggestion?
Go ahead.
I know that, um, that there are a lot of things on, um, Ms. Fincham's plate right now. And I'm wondering if there is maybe a council member who might have some availability to really roll up the sleeves and, and kind of work on this. And, um, what you could do is you could do a motion to approve both of these amounts subject to an informal consensus of council as to the details. And that way, it would allow you to move forward, um, and, and I think it would allocate a, a resource in terms of actually getting, you know, getting the information, the
Well.
The details.
Do you want to read that motion, what you just said then?
Okay, is there a motion to approve expenditure of ARPA funds for safety improvements in town government buildings not to exceed twenty thousand dollars and for ADA compliance of the town playground not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars subject to an informal consensus of council as to the details of each of these two projects.
And informal being emails or phone calls?
Yes.
Okay.
We can add the gate, well, let's do this and then I'll do another one for the gate.
Alright, I make that motion?
I got it first by Mrs. Gaines, I have a second.
I'll second it.
I got a second by, uh, Deborah, uh, let's do a roll call. Uh, Jean? Oh, he wants to discuss, I'm sorry, I forgot.
Uh, well, the only statement I want to make on this is this is kind of bringing back the idea of the committees that we got rid of.
Say what now?
Well, we used to have committees for this very purpose.
Yeah.
You know, those were gotten rid of and now we're kind of, this is kind of why we have them, but.
I was just thinking one person to kind of take on this one thing to.
A point person, but if you're talking emails and everything, then it's coming back to the rest of council, but it's, it's still, it's just a different flow thing, but I was just making that statement.
Yeah, well, well, she kind of like me, I'm, I'm helping out with the, with the safety glass and in the front counter, okay, I'm getting prices on that stuff, so, you know, that's anyhow, uh, do a roll call vote, we have nobody else, Jean? Jeff?
Yeah, I can go with that.
Tammy? Valerie? Deborah?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Alright, you have to vote. Motion carries.
So a motion to approve the expenditure of ARPA funds for a gate at the, um, public utilities facility. Um, again, subject to an informal consensus as to the particular details of the gate um, in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
I'll make the motion.
Good motion by Jeff, second, second by Ms. Gaines, uh, Arthur, I'm sorry, any discussion? Getting ahead of myself. Here and none, roll call vote, Arthur?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Valerie? Tammy? Jeff?
Yes.
Uh, Jean? I got one no, I've got five yeses, motion carries.
And Mr. Mayor, would you like to identify now who the council member is that would like to spearhead this?
Do we have a council member that would like to help out with the town, well, uh, with the town playground improvement? All right, Mrs. Gaines, is there anybody else that would like to help besides her? Alright.
I hope if you need any help, Tammy. I'll help if you need it.
Well, the gate, how about, how about, how about the gate? Tammy, you doing, well, which one you doing, the gate or the playground, playground? Or how about the gate, does anybody want to help, uh, Josh with the gate? No? Alright, well, here and none, I'll, uh, I'll dig into it with him. We'll get it figured out, I got time on my hands to do stuff, so. I'm, I already said I was doing that. Unless somebody else wants to step up with me. Alright. Thank y'all for that, glad to get that out the way, now we can move on to, uh.
May I ask one question, is it, um, councils in agreement with us unlocking the door to town hall? Is that what council would like us to do?
I'm okay with you continuing to do what you're currently doing for now.
I, I, I think we should be open, I'm sorry, I, I don't know a business right now that's closed because of safety. I mean, we, if there's a threat like that, I mean, I, I work in a practice where we get irate patients all the time, I think you have to have always a, a plan in place, no matter what, where you are. And you can put up all you want, that does not always keep you safe. You can go to Walmart and you can get shot, so I don't understand why we're, if that's the reason, um, that we're closed, and I also feel like that probably needed to be run through council to begin with, because I was totally shocked and I, I don't know why more people in the community haven't said, why isn't town hall open? And we, we aren't equipped to handle things online like we should be, so I, I take, I feel, I feel like it's inexcusable.
Well, I'm, I think I'm with you, Deb, because I've said before, why isn't it open? And I know it was for COVID at the time. But sometimes you, you, you stand here and you wait and there's nobody to come get the door real quick because they're all off doing something else. So, you know, and I can see what it's like, somebody walking in and nobody's being there too with them, you know? But I'm just saying, I'm, I'm agree with you about it being open. Anybody else? I guess it's just you and I, Deborah. Yeah, I mean, the consensus, I mean, we're not gonna vote on it, but just a consensus of what council wants to see. If you want to see it open, then we'll get it open.
Do we need to vote on it?
I'd say leave it up to the girls if they, how they feel about it, um, because I'm not in there.
Yeah, I'm not hearing much of one, so I guess we're just as it is, status quo. Alright, moving on to, uh, close session, the, uh, town attorney has it.
Their motion to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one for the discussion of appointment, an appointment to town council.
So moved.
I got it first by Jeff, second by Tammy, all in favor, raise your right hand. Alright. All right. We. So moved. All right, moving on to, uh, closed session, the, uh, town attorney has it.
Their motion to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 for the discussion of appointment, an appointment to town council.
So moved.
I got it first by Jeff, second by Tammy. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. We.
Arthur, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Ms. Jean. Uh, I will do a roll call. Jean?
Yes, and, and certify.
Ms. Gaines?
Yes, and I certify.
Ms. Coyle?
Certified.
Ms., uh, uh, Deborah Howard? Mr. Ho, uh, Hooly?
Yes, I certify.
All right, we are now in open session. Now, do I have a motion to accept?
To appoint.
To appoint Randy Hagman as our.
To fill the remainder of Jerry Covington's term until November, when a special election can be held for that seat.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Deborah?
Aye.
Valerie? Tammy? Jeff?
Yes.
Jean? Motion carries. Mr. Randy Hagman is our new council member. Uh, as soon as he gets sworn in, he will be officially town council. They're messaging right now. Uh, do I hear a motion to, uh, adjourn?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
I got a motion to adjourn, do I have a second? And I got a second by Mr. Arthur. Do all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye, stay here, nope. He is closed. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.